That's funny. Wow. Yeah, cats are cool. I love cats. I had one and I don't have it anymore. I've had probably fifteen, eighteen cats in my life. I remember this kid, so all his kids had cats.
Somebody need to plug in the timer?
Uh, it should be. It's on.
Is it?
Should be.
No?
Oh, well.
Yeah, it's good.
Okay. I didn't see, uh, I guess it's time to get, uh, shoot. Somebody want to get the door?
Yeah, I'll get the door.
He's coming. Yeah, just left him. I don't know if she's coming or not.
All set. Thank you, sir.
I don't know if she's coming or not.
Alright, we're gonna get going. Good evening. Welcome to the December eleventh zoning board of adjustment meeting. To my left is Mr. Carter Falk, who is the deputy planning manager for the city of Nashua. Across the way, we have Mr. Steven Lionel, Mr. Jack Currier, who's our vice president, Ms. Mary Ellen McKay, who is our secretary, and I'm your chair, Mr. J. P. Boucher. This meeting is recorded by a written transcript and also is video recorded. Please direct all testimony to the microphone, and we ask that only one person speak at a time. If you don't have a copy of tonight's agenda, you'll find it on the back table at the back of the auditorium. Tonight, we'll be hearing requests for deviations to the Nashua zoning code in the form of special exceptions and variances. And I'll explain each one of those. A special exception is a request that looks to, that seeks permission to do something that the zoning ordinance permits only under special circumstances. There are five criteria for this board to grant a request for a special exception. First one is the requested use must be listed in the table of use regulations as a special exception. Second, the request's use will not create undue traffic congestion or unduly impair pedestrian safety. Third, the requested use will not overload any public water, drainage, or sewer system other than, other, or any other municipal systems such that other areas of the city will be subjected to hazards affecting health, safety, or general welfare. Fourth, any special regulations for the use set forth in other sections of the zoning ordinance are fulfilled. And fifth, the requested use will not impair the integrity or character of the district of adjoining zones nor be detrimental to the health, morals, or welfare of the residents of Nashua. A variance is a request that seeks permission to do something that the ordinance does not permit. The five criteria that need to be established for the approval of a variance are: the variance will not be contrary to public interest; second, the spirit of the ordinance is observed; third, the substantial justice is done; fourth, the values of surrounding properties are not diminished; and fifth, the literal enforcement of the provisions of the ordinance would result in unnecessary hardship. Per the city of Nashua bylaws, a minimum of three or more affirmative votes are required to approve any application. Also, this board will hear all scheduled cases along as a quorum of three voting members are presented at this meeting. Tonight, we have four voting members here tonight. There may or may not be another member that comes in, but right now, there are, there's four of us, so we will move forward with tonight's meeting. Any citizen has the right to contest a decision that this board makes. Should we make a decision that you believe is an error, you have the right to request a rehearing. A written rehearing request must be received through Mr. Falk and the city of Nashua planning department within thirty calendar days from the day after a decision was made. Should this board not grant a rehearing request, you can file an appeal directly to the New Hampshire Superior Court. You can contact Mr. Falk for more information. Per our approved zoning board of adjustment bylaws, the review and decision of each application occurs in two parts. The first part of tonight's proceedings is called a public hearing. This is where the applicant and citizens address this board and speak to the merits of the case. The order of testimony is as follows. The applicant will have fifteen minutes to present their case. Then those in favor will have a limit of five minutes each to testify. Then those in opposition with questions will have a limit of five minutes each to testify. Then the applicant has five minutes to speak in rebuttal. And then finally, a representative, and only one person of those in opposition with questions, will have five minutes to speak in rebuttal. Again, we ask that you please direct all testimony to this board and not the audience. If you have any questions about an application, they are to be directed to the board, and we'll get them answered for you. Second part of tonight's proceeding is called a public meeting, where this board debates, debates the merits of this case amongst ourselves. Please note that during the public meeting, there is no testimony allowed from the audience. We'll ask that you silence your cellphones. And if you need to have a conversation, we just ask that you step out in the hallway. The acoustics are really good in this room, so we can hear everything that's being said. Mr. Falk, is there any changes to the agenda tonight?
No, there are not.
Okay. Is there anybody that has any questions in the audience before we get started? Okay. Seeing none? I will open the first case, which is owner Manuel Lopez Revocable Trust. Applicant is Kathy Elliott, five Friar Truck Lane, Friar Tuck Lane. Description is Manuel F. Lopez Revocable Trust owner Kathy M. Elliott applicant, five Friar Truck Lane, sheet B lot seventeen seventy-eight, requesting the following: special exception from land use code section one ninety fifteen, table fifteen dash one, number three, to allow an accessory in-law dwelling unit, and two, a variance from land use code section one ninety dash thirty-two to exceed maximum size of accessory dwelling unit, seven hundred fifty square feet allowed, nine hundred square feet proposed. It's in the R nine zoning district. Welcome, ma'am, and please give us your name and address, please.
My name is Kathy Elliott, and my mailing address is P.O. Box eighty-three here in Nashua, oh-three oh-six-one.
Okay, thank you. Feel free to pull that mic down if you feel more comfortable. There you go. Do you want to tell us what you, uh, once you tell us just what you, what you want to do, what your situation is, and, and we, we have your application, but if you want to just tell us.
My mom's the original owner. She bought the house back in the seventies when I was little. There was a house fire July first of two thousand seventeen, so in rebuilding, now that she's getting advanced in her years and her health isn't as great, she'd like to come back to Nashua and live upstairs and have myself downstairs close by, so that if she requires any assistance or help, I can help her out.
Okay.
So we want to build the basement into a separate dwelling and have her be upstairs, because she does travel sometimes. And then when she leaves, she would lock up the upstairs, so it would be separate from us downstairs, so we would need the same sort of facilities as you would, you know, kitchen, bathroom, bedrooms with egress windows.
And, um, one of the items is, is that, one of the variances here, not only for the in-law, is you're asking for more square footage. Kind of explain why that, why that is.
Um, that's the, after the fire, what existed that was intact still was the foundation, the basement, the patio, and the garage. So it's, we want to build within the existing basement. It's the space that's already there. And with the plan, I think it was included with the application. It makes, makes allowance for very modest to small-sized bedrooms, two, two of them, one for myself and one for my son, because I'm also getting older and I have some dis, health issues as well. So it'll be helpful to have my son there with us.
So again, the nine hundred fifty square feet is because it fits within the existing foundation?
Yes.
Perimeter. Okay.
Yes, that's correct.
Um, anything else you'd like to add?
Um, just that my mom, her health is not as good as it was, and it continues to deteriorate. And she's been telling me that she's very lonely, and she wants to be closer by when she's here. She wants to be closer to family. And bringing her back to five Friar Tuck Lane here in Nashua would bring her a lot closer. Right now, she lives in Bedford. So it'd just be so much easier to have her close by.
Okay. Alright. And one of the things I know we'll ask is, have you reviewed or have you seen the accessory dwelling unit special conditions?
Um, yes, I read it when I put the application in and was filling out all the paperwork.
Okay. So you've seen everything, and you, you agree to all these? I, I, we could go through all of these, all these items. I don't know if you just want to, we just want to just go quickly through that, just so you can affirm that? Alright? Do you have a copy of that? Mr. Currier is gonna just let you borrow his copy, and then we'll, and then we're just gonna get affirmation from you? Okay? So the first item on the accessory dwelling unit, special condition, regulations are, special conditions are: the accessory dwelling unit shall be clearly incidental, subordinate, in extent in use, purpose, and primary structure does not exceed seven hundred fifty square feet. So I know you're here for a square footage upgrade, but basically, it's just clearly incidental to the, to the main unit.
Yes, it's in the basement, yes.
Okay? The accessory dwelling unit shall be, the only accessory dwelling unit within or on the same lot is a single-family dwelling unit. The accessory dwelling unit shall not alter the single-family character of the appearance of the single-family dwelling or its conformity to the character of the neighborhood. So no new entrance or exit to an accessory dwelling unit shall be constructed on the front or frontage side of the single-family dwelling unit. No new curb cut from the street shall be constructed, and the exterior design of accessory dwelling unit shall be compatible with the single-family dwelling unit, dwelling through architectural use of building forms and scale. So basically, no, no outwardly changes?
That's correct. It's, it's gonna remain a single-family home.
The owner of the property must either, must occupy either prime accessory dwelling unit as the owner's principal place of residence?
My mom plans to move home once the house is finished being built.
The owner of the property shall provide the city of Nashua with a covenant filing with the Hillsborough County Register of Deeds, along with appropriate filing fees. Again, the, the language is there. Do you agree with that? That's something you have to do. One additional off-street parking space is required above the minimum standard for a single-family house. I think you got plenty of parking there. An interior door shall be provided between the primary dwelling unit and accessory dwelling unit?
We plan to do that, yes.
Single-family dwelling, the single-family dwelling and accessory dwelling unit shall not be separated in ownership, including by condominium ownership.
Yeah, my mom's been the sole owner. She doesn't plan to do that.
So not gonna be split up. Accessory dwelling shall only be associated with single-family detached dwellings and shall not be associated with manufactured housing as defined in RSA six seventy-four dash, uh, colon thirty-one. So this is, this is not the case here. I know that.
Right.
Right? Okay, thank you. Are there any questions? Ms. Lionel?
Just a quick question. You had said something about your mother, you know, when she travels, would lock up the upstairs where she's living?
Right, it makes her feel, she still has a measure for independence and stuff.
Okay, so how do you, how would, do you get into your, your basement unit if she does that?
Uh, the garage door.
Garage door.
There's a two-car garage, and it's an automatic garage door opener.
Okay, and, and there's, on your drawing here, it looks like there are stairs on, in a corner.
After you come in the garage, to the left, there'll be a door, and then we'll have access to stairs that bring us directly downstairs.
I see. Okay. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Any other questions for Ms. Elliott? Okay, thank you very much. You're all set for now. Is there anybody else in the audience who'd like to speak in favor of this application? Seeing? Yes?
Of the applicant.
Uh, ma'am, would you mind coming back up? That's okay. Ms. McKay has a question for you. Sorry about that.
I apologize.
Oh, no problem.
You said. I shut it off because I wrestle all the papers as a clerk. I apologize. You said that if your mom was to leave, she would lock the door. Is that the second egress, because there should be two?
Um, she lock, would lock the upstairs, the main upstairs, but none of the egresses would be locked. That's gonna be downstairs are egresses.
I just wanted to make sure. Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
I'll ask one more time. Is anybody else that would like to speak in favor of this application? Seeing none. Anybody with questions, concerns, or opposition of this application? Alright, seeing none, I'll close the public hearing and open the public meeting. Mr. Currier?
Well, the questions I had were answered during the testimony. You know, it looked like the house was under construction. Okay, it was on, on fire and is being redone. It isn't the first time this board has heard a request for overage on the in-law unit when it's, as I would call it, to kind of fulfill a story. I mean, it's the, that, that basement, that foundation provides that square footage. And if, I feel if the applicant were to adhere strictly to seven hundred and fifty, it would be kind of walling off to skinny that down to seven hundred and fifty. So I, I don't really, I don't have a problem with the nine hundred square feet. I think it still meets the spirit and intent that you want. It'll, it'll be incidental. You won't know it's, it's an accessory dwelling unit. It's not gonna look any different on the outside. So I'm okay with both the special exception and the request for nine hundred square feet. And that's where I'm at on it.
Okay. Ms. Lionel?
I have no issues with this.
Ms. McKay?
I have no issues with this.
I also have no issues. Mr. Currier can say it better.
Exactly.
Are you gonna make a motion?
Sure, that'd be great. Thank you.
Which one you want to do first? Special exception?
I think I'll do the special exception. Sure. So I'm gonna make a motion first for the special exception. And again, the owner is Manuel Lopez Revocable Trust, and the applicant is Kathy Elliott. And the address is five Friar, Friar Tuck Lane. This special exception is a request from land use code one ninety dash fifteen, table fifteen dash one, and that's to allow an accessory in-law dwelling unit. As I just read, it's listed in the table of uses. I think the board finds that this will not create undue traffic congestion or unduly impair pedestrian safety, will not overload public water, drainage, sewer, or other municipal systems. The nine special regulations for an accessory dwelling unit have been answered orally by the applicant, and I think the board finds that all nine are met. The only exception to those nine is the seven hundred and fifty square feet, which I'll be making a, a motion here in a moment for nine hundred square feet proposed. And I think the board finds that this will not impair the integrity or be out of character with the neighborhood. I think the board finds that the proposed accessory dwelling unit will, will look no different than if it wasn't there. It'll still look like a single-family home. So I make a motion to approve as applied for tonight.
Second, second by Mr. Lionel. Any discussion? Seeing none. All those in favor? That's four to nothing. Congratulations, ma'am. Your, your special exception is approved, so now we're going to go through the area variance.
So I'll make a motion to approve the area variance. And again, the request, same address, five Friar Tuck Lane, and the request is a variance from land use code section one ninety dash thirty-two, and that's to exceed the maximum size of an accessory dwelling unit. Maximum size permitted is seven hundred and fifty square feet. The proposal tonight is nine hundred square feet. Believe the board finds the variance is needed to enable the applicant's proposed use of the property, given the special conditions of the property. The proposed use is an accessory in-law dwelling unit, which will occupy one of the, one of the floors of the house. And given the existing foundation size, that, that unit would be nine hundred square feet. I think the board finds that it's reasonable to allow the occupant to have the whole story for that accessory dwelling unit. It will not, I think the board finds it's within the spirit and intent of the ordinance and will not adversely affect property values of surrounding parcels. I think the board finds it's not contrary to public interest and substantial justice is served. So again, I make a motion to approve the nine hundred square feet area variance.
Second by Mr. Lionel. Any discussion? Seeing none. All those in favor? That's four to nothing. Congratulations, ma'am. Your variance is approved, so both have been approved. So you're all set. Just be aware that there's a thirty-day window of appeal, but it sounds like it's highly unlikely that will happen, so congratulations. You're all set. With that, I'll close case number one. And I will open case number two. Before I have the applicant come up, this case has some documentation that you've all read. I don't know if you've had time to read that?
I haven't. Mr. Lionel has.
Has? Okay. I, Mr. Currier, I would ask, at this point, would, would we be served well to be able to have the applicant look at that at some point?
Sure. Maybe the applicant come up first and.
Take a look at it?
And then, uh.
Yeah, we'll take, then we can hand that to them?
Yeah.
Alright, just wanna, there's a lot there, and I don't know, you know, reading it all may be a little too much. Okay. Alright, so I will call case number two, and that is for forty-nine Harbor Ave LLC, care of Harry. Bohegan? Applicant is Kyle Worth. It's forty-nine Harbor Ave. The description is forty-nine Harbor Ave LLC, care of Harry Bohegan, owner Kyle Worth, applicant forty-nine Harbor Ave, sheet eighteen, lot twenty-two. Requested use variance from land use code section one ninety dash twenty, section C subsection one, to convert previous commercial use on the first floor of an existing building into five multiple family units, where multiple family units are not allowed on the first floor in the D three M U zone. Zoning district is D three M U. Welcome. You can have your name and address, please.
I, he's gonna, he's gonna skim, skim that letter first, so just wait until he's done.
Since there is a lot, would it make sense if one of the next people wanted to go before me?
We have a process to follow, so, so we will, we'll take a few minutes, and we'll let you go through that.
I'll be quick.
Take as much time as you need, and then you'll have opportunity to take a look at it after you're done presenting.
Alright, I think I understand mostly what they're looking for there.
Okay.
So my name's Kyle Worth. I'd like to start with thanking Mr. Falk for helping answer some questions for me over the last month or two. And I'm actually excited to be here tonight. And a lot of what the comments from neighbors were addressing are similar things I was planning to address tonight as well. So the intent here is, there's currently a building that is on Harbor Ave, and the top floor has ten residential units. And they're all very small, one-bedroom units. First floor has been sitting vacant for many years. And we feel that's due to the fact that the D three mixed-use zone requires commercial use there. And it's a very awkward space for a commercial property. Just by standing outside, it seems that way. So this request was to have fi, to be granted a variance to allow five more residential units to be put on the first floor. I'll quickly go through the five different sections of the, of a zoning variance. Wanting to make sure that it's in line with public interest is the first one. The pictures and most of the note from neighboring units. Clearly, the visual aesthetics of the exterior of the building are terrible. I included some pictures in my submission here. There's vandalism on the building, multiple shades of siding. It's, it's an eyesore for the neighborhood, which is all residential units, which are very well-kept. Mr. Falk had the suggestion of, it's very helpful to go speak with all the neighboring units and kind of get some support. I spoke with five different neighboring units. I have three signatures here showing support for the project, and two more verbally supporting, just didn't want to give their name. So our intention not only would be to use first floor for residential, but to really clean up the whole property. It's kind of dragging down that whole area of the neighborhood by its current looks. And financially, that's not even possible without really having a way to bring in income on the first floor to help pay for some of that renovation. And that's really the, the reason we're here. Second section. Observing the spirit of the ordinance. I believe the proposal will still observe the spirit of the D three mixed-use ordinance because allowing residential use on the first floor of this property, it's not going to alter the essential characteristics of the neighborhood. I have lots of different pages in this submission that show that all the neighboring units, other than just a couple, are all residential first and second floor. So it's actually, this is kind of the odd building out by still being commercial zoning for the first floor. The third part was substantial justice being done by granting this zoning variance. The seller, he essentially hasn't been able to rent this space. It's been vacant for the last eight years. Even when it was rented, it was very, very underutilized. And as a landlord, he kind of expressed he just simply wasn't able to do major renovations to the exterior if he wasn't able to rent his building. So this will, allowing this would allow him not to only sell this property. I probably should have clarified that in the beginning. I have a letter of intent that's signed for me to purchase this property from the current owner. The letter of intent states that it will only go through if this variance is, is allowed. So by allowing this, it does substantial justice to the current owner, because he'll be allowed to sell it, and then also for me as the buyer. Proposed use will not diminish values of surrounding properties was the fourth section. That's pretty evident based on, again, the pictures of vandalism on the property. I absolutely understand the concern from the neighbors about it kind of being an eyesore. And the intention, again, would be a renovation, not only of interior but exterior, to help the whole neighborhood. The fifth one was literal enforcement of the ordinance would result in an unnecessary hardship. And again, I believe that's evident with the over four thousand square feet of space that has been vacant for over eight years. The, it's been listed for rent, for lease. There's been a variety of tenants have came and looked at the property, but everyone felt it was not a good space for whatever business they were looking for. So the, the current zoning has kind of inhibited them from being able to rent this space. I did include a plot plan, as well as some other pictures that show pretty much every other property around it. That is also residential use on the first floor. That's really all I've got, so I just wanted to know. I'm sure there's a few questions I could answer.
Mr. Currier?
Just wondering, you mentioned upstairs, there's ten units, and I think you said all ten were single-bedroom units?
Yes.
And with your proposal of five units on the first floor, what would be the bedroom count of those five units?
Right now, the plan would be a studio, a one-bedroom, sorry, a studio, two one-bedrooms, two two-bedrooms.
I see. And how, are, I think you said that there are, are the ten units on the second floor currently occupied?
Right now, eight out of the ten are.
Eight, okay.
And the other two have, I believe leases in place, and they just haven't moved in yet.
And then, when I look at the property, there's, I, I think what's, is a driveway on the west side of it, or, yeah, that would be the west side.
Yes.
And, uh, the, the structure you have, just to make sure I got this right, is, is separate than the structure that, that's right next to it, that looks like it's a repair garage?
Correct.
Does the repair garage own the driveway behind the repair garage?
They do not.
Is that, is that, would that be all your driveway?
That's correct.
Okay. And then, there's a fence at the end of that driveway, and I'm getting, that's, goes up against Bowery Street. But it, it doesn't look like that's, it looks like it's a little bit higher up. What would your intent be with that? To keep that walled off, or to have that a drive-through, or?
I looked at the folder that was in the planning department. They had looked at the option of trying to lower the grade. I think it was a foot and a half to two feet. And then making it so cars could come in from both sides, increase the amount of parking and accessibility. And that would definitely be something that we would look into right away.
Okay. And then, how many parking spaces is reasonably accommodated in that driveway?
It says ten on paper. You'd be tough, you couldn't get every car out of there if you put ten. Roughly, I'd say six trucks, seven for compact cars.
And then, of the current folks on the second floor, how, how much, I mean, we've, we've heard some, people say, well, I'll rent to people who don't drive, I don't know if that really happens. How many cars are there, you know, currently? How many, how many, you know, spaces are being consumed currently?
I knew that would be one of the biggest questions here, so I went seven different days, multiple weekdays, multiple weekends, mornings, nights, never saw more than one vehicle there. Kind of confuses me a little that that high of a percentage don't have any vehicles, but the landlord said he has kind of marketed it as something that people can walk to downtown, that a vehicle isn't really necessary because everything is fairly walkable from there.
Okay. And then, I, I guess that's it for the questions I have at the moment.
Any other questions? Okay, that, that'll be good, now you might be back up.
Okay.
Can we have the pictures and that paperwork that Mr. Lionel gave to you? If you could just bring it back, this would be great, thank you.
There's actually a few questions I have from this that maybe I'll, I'll ask. It's on opposite here. Do you mind if I ask from this here?
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah.
This is for Mr. Worth, right?
Yes, from Mr. Worth.
Take your time, Mr. Curry.
So these, the lady who writes this letter, I think she's here tonight, but while, while you're there, she was asking about the dumpster. I mean, I've only gone, I only went by it once in my sidewalk, and it appears the dumpster is kind of where it is in this picture. So what, what's your dumpster thought here? What's your dumpster plan?
After parking in that lot many times, it is a very awkward setup for a dumpster, and very aesthetically unappealing to have it be right on the street. So our hope is that if we are able to bring down the grade on the backside of that parking lot where the fence is, we would have the dumpster accessible from the other side.
Okay.
And a lot of the, a lot of the things in the picture, again, that's something, there's like trash, kids' toys, things that simply should be put in a dumpster and just have been left there. So our intent, again, would be to clean that up, and I'm, I'm not sure that's really a lack of dumpster problem, just a lack of people caring to put things in the dumpster problem.
Okay. That's it for what I have.
I think that the management question is, is useful.
Well, yeah, another question, it's number three, is will, I, I think you might have addressed it, but will there be proper management, residents do hang out on the sidewalk in front of the building all hours of the day and night? So if this were approved, and, and then if you buy it, and would you be the property manager?
Yes.
So I, you know, I think it's a reasonable question for probably in a butter to ask, and for this board to ask, is, you know, there's some concern with the management of the unit there now, and how, you know, would you, what would your be, role be in that, and how do you anticipate, would that be an improvement from the current condition? If you could speak to that?
Absolutely. So my wife and myself would be the property managers. The current owner is living in Florida for the past few years, someone else kind of oversees it on a very part-time basis, more for signing new leases, collecting rents. My wife and I have helped with my father-in-law manage some very tricky units up in Concord, so we've helped with many difficult tenants, and so we're definitely used to having to deal with challenges of tenants that are not the greatest for their neighbors, and that's something that doesn't really scare us off, and I think that we'd be able to, to help not only improve the physical structure itself, but also kind of the impact on the neighborhood.
Okay. I mean, just getting back to the parking, again, your vision is the same before, where you're, you're anticipating you can find renters that don't have multiple vehicles, or in some cases, not even one vehicle, that to catch them all, and get them all on the...
Correct. I did skip over one of the pages, that was public interest, I thought it was maybe not fully necessary here, but it was kind of on rent-controlled, not subsidized housing, but just affordable housing. So one of our goals was to try and keep these fairly affordable houses compared to any other new construction, so we're looking at the eight hundred to a thousand dollar a month range for the rents, and that's very difficult to find in town right now. So really, the goal, we didn't think, we did think that there would be opportunities for people without vehicles in that price point, and that would be, again, be the goal with, to not have people with multiple vehicles there.
Okay. Thank you, that's it for me.
Okay. Thank you.
Thanks.
Anybody else in the audience like to speak in favor of this application? Seeing none, anybody with questions, concerns, or oppositions to the application? Just have your name and address, please.
Yep, my name is John Gurekas, I live at fifty-four Harbor Avenue. Our biggest concerns, we're not against cleaning it up and doing what they gotta do, because it is a disaster over there, it's a mess, but parking's an issue. You can go by there one day and there might be two cars, in the summertime, there might be so many cars, you can't come around a corner. And what they do is they park so close to the corner on Harbor Avenue at Odison Street that cars that come out of Odison Street have to go into the left lane almost to get around, because they're so far back. So that's one of our concerns, I mean, if we can clean this up, this is great, but ten units plus five more, to me, seems like an awful lot for that building, with the parking spaces that are available now. They used to keep the dumpster at the other end. The problem is, is the guy that, we used to own the house also, I should say, my, my dad did, these were three properties that he owned, but he used to own the house at forty-nine Odison, uh, forty-seven Odison Street, right behind it. There used to be a dumpster, and we used to have it all the way back to the other side, but the guy that picks up the dump cannot get in there, because the cars, were so many cars at one time, you couldn't even get a dumpster in there. So they pushed it out to the very beginning, and it was actually on the other side against the building, but the previous, the, the, the existing owner would push it to the other side, and it was in our tenants' area, and it actually got pushed into our yard, into the front of the house. So we kept moving it back, and it just get to be a, and I, I'm, a fight back and forth, but it's an eyesore. It should be, I don't have a problem if they can push it and leave it to the other end, or push it against the building was fine too, but he always wanted it on the other side. I, I just, I, I, I'm, I, I think it's great that he's doing what he wants to do and clean it up, but I, I really have an issue with the parking, because we, there are so many cars some days there that, like I said, you can't get through there. They actually, for a while, were parking in Southern New Hampshire's parking lot, and they threw them out, because there was no parking over there, and people were afraid that lived there that they'd get their cars damaged. But upstairs, I see the people that live there, and everybody needs help, but it's like a rooming house. I believe, and I'm not sure, but I believe the owner had taken us through there, and there's only one bathroom for male and female. I don't believe they have them in each unit, but I, I think there're just one up there. And, I, I mean, like I said, we, we would love to see it cleaned up, we don't want to stop it. My dad was one that was always for development, he was all, never, never wanted to see anybody go without, but I just don't see how they're gonna get the parking there. On Har- on Harbor Avenue, you only have probably sixty feet, maybe from Bowery Street to Odison Street, and I don't know what the code is, but I think it's probably fifteen, twenty feet from the corner, so now you're limited to maybe one or two cars, but they don't park that way, they actually park all the way from corner to corner. So, and there's sidewalks there, and it's dangerous, and, and like the letter had said, there's, there's a ton of them in the summertime that stand out on that front sidewalk, and all they do is smoke and talk and holler and scream and fight, and cops come all the time over there. They were actually there just the other day, there were ten cruises out front, I don't know what happened, but they were, they had surrounded the building for something that was going on upstairs. So if he can clean it up, and maybe get a different type of rental out of that, that'd be great. We're, we're not against that at all, because the building looks horrible right now, and one of our goals was, we hope that Southern New Hampshire would have taken it, but they haven't come that far. But, so that's, that's our biggest concern, was, was that, and does the whole building have to get brought up the code, meaning sprinkler system, fire alarms in the whole building, egress, back and forth? I don't know what the codes are, it's just a question that we're asking. But that's my concerns. Thank you.
One question. Since you've lived there a long time, I'm just curious what you think about the idea of opening the driveway up on Bowery Street, if that's possible. Do you think that's a good idea or a bad idea?
I don't, I personally don't know how you're gonna do it, because like I said, my dad and my uncle, my grandparents owned the two houses that are back-to-back on Odison Street and Bowery Street, and there's a wall there, and if you take that down, I'm not sure how that wall's gonna come down on, on the side and on Bowery Street. It's very possible that they could build another wall there, but that wall is what the old tie factory that used to be there was what held out, held the parking lot up for the people that lived, I mean, for the businesses that were there.
Okay.
So, but I don't know what it would do, I mean, it, it might help his access, getting cars in and out of there, because that, he said it himself, that's one of the issues is, it's so tight in there that I just, I don't even know how they approved it for nine, nine, ten apartments upstairs previously, never mind five more. But if, if, if you could do that, and we could meet the codes, is, I mean, like I said, we'd love to see it cleaned up.
Okay. Um, the other question I have, you, I'm sorry, you live at fifty-four, is it?
Yes, fifty-four, and my, my family owns, also owns fifty-two.
So just like in the last ten, fifteen years, it doesn't, this question doesn't have to do with this property, but I'm just curious, with the hospital expanding, has that, do you feel that's been a good thing for the neighborhood?
Yeah, it has, because the old Hudson Bus Line was a disaster, was a mess also, and I don't want to sit here and tell you stories about my dad, but my dad had told us at one time, way, way back, when he was an alderman here, that there was a plan that they were gonna take from all, all the, all, all the way from Prospect Street to Bowery Street, and their plans was, this was way back, that they were gonna level everything and turn it all into parking while they're closed. But I don't know if that will ever happen, if they're as far as they've gone or what, but it, it has, it has been coming down towards Harbor Avenue like they said it was, and that's the only eyesore. I mean, the garage next door isn't that much better, but it's, it's one guy that lives there, and he lives in, he, he repairs cars themselves, and there's no issues with it.
Okay.
But the, the bigger issue is all those people that are always standing in the summertime out front, but he is right, there's only been one or two cars there lately, I'm not sure all the places are rented upstairs, but there's a big changeover with the amount of, with the, the different people that are coming and going all the time. Some days, you'll see ten cars out back or on, on the street, other days, you'll see one, and like it is now, there's nothing. And the previous owner never took care of anything, because it was always a mess out there.
All right, thank you.
All right, thank you.
Well, so, any other questions?
Thank you.
Anybody else like to speak with questions, concerns, or in opposition? So, there's a letter here?
Yeah, you wanna read it? I, I guess, maybe.
Should we read it to record, or should we just paraphrase?
I think we've all read it. If you think anything hasn't been addressed, you could speak to it.
So there is a, a letter that we... Sure, we'll, we'll give you that too.
Could you get up to the mic?
Just the mic and your name again, sorry.
Yeah, John Gurekas, fifty-four Harbor Avenue. If it was turned into something elderly, because we do have one at fifty-six Harbor Avenue, it's sixty-five plus, and we have people that walk all the time over the shahs and everything else, and they're very nice. If this is something that could be done there, that would be ideal, because then you wouldn't need all that parking, if they could just walk to Main Street, or they could walk to shahs or whatever, but I'm, I'm just not sure with, if it's gonna be multifamily, how that's gonna work if it's, if it's, there's gonna be too many cars out there. But if it was like the one next door, they have parked, they have, they have a lot of parking spaces, but there are a lot of people that walk, I see them all the time walking back and forth, the elderly people, so, that's all I wanted to say, is if they could turn it into something, that would be great like that too.
All right, thank you.
Yeah, thank you. Uh, we did receive a, a, a letter from Ms. Judith Gurekas Farrar of Ten Brickyard Lane in Nashua, again, part of the same family, Gurekas family, and Mr. Gurekas had spoke to a lot of what's in the letter here, and there were some questions that came up in the testimony that we asked about parking, that was, we talked about parking, the number of units, the trash, the proper management, maintenance of the building, and then there was one question about chairman fence in the back of the lot on Bowery Street. It's a disrepair, it, they just, you know, they state it's dangerous for the condition. So those were some questions with this testimony, and then there were pictures that were submitted also of the property, the parking, the dumpster, so that was, again, presented, the applicant did have a chance to take a look at it. So at this point, we'll put this in the record, officially in the record. So at this point now, Mr. Worth, you have...
Anybody else in opposition?
No, there was none. There was not, there was nobody else in opposition, I don't think anybody else had their hand up, so. So with that, at this point, Mr. Worth, you have five minutes to come back and to talk about what you've heard in opposition, and, and address those, and then we may have some questions for you.
So again, Kyle Worth, for the forty-nine Harbor Ave, and I absolutely agree with pretty much everything that was said, and I thank them, because they're, they've been here so long that I haven't gotten to experience kind of anything beyond the last couple months of, of what's been going on at that property. Definitely, I think, one of the other key parts I want to address, really the reason I'm kind of into trying to find affordable housing, is I run the second-largest adult medical day program in the state, and I provide long-term care services to about a hundred and fifty seniors each week, and I'd say our case managers at work probably place fifteen to twenty seniors that are borderline gonna be out of a house, and are looking for cheap places to rent. I'm also opening a new one in Nashua in the next two months, and I guarantee I'm gonna have the same issues here, seniors looking for housing, and that's really my long-term intent, rather than, I'm not sure how the current tenant landlords have found their current tenants, but you're, you're right on with what my long-term game plan for the property would be, and we are very aware that the parking is not excessive there, it's definitely less than it should be, and we're, me and my wife were, after many talks, deciding that trying to aim towards seniors would not only go with our other work, but also be more appropriate for the building. A question to you guys is, are there any changes, like, can it be restricted to, say, fifty-five and older? Does that give something a higher chance of being granted approval?
Not, not necessarily. Yeah, it would be a land use issue, you know?
All different land use.
Yeah, Mr. Curry, Mr. Worth.
If it was elderly housing, like strictly elderly housing, that's a whole different land use category besides just regular, standard, market rate, multifamily, so that would be a different application.
Okay.
Different advertisement and everything, so the board really can't consider that, since it hasn't been advertised as an elderly housing development, but, you know, the only other option, you could withdraw this one and come back with an elderly housing type of application, but for right now, the board really has to consider what's in front of them.
Sure.
But we take your testimony, what you say, we, we weigh that in our, 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 you know, when we go into our session to make a decision. Any, any other questions?
I'm tapped out.
I, I just want to make a comment, if, if my understanding is correctly regarding this elderly, elderly housing is one thing, and then like fifty-five plus is, is another thing, because the, the ordinances have a special section about what's required if you're making a proposal under the elderly housing code, which I don't think you're planning to do here. So, just, this is just an observation, nothing related to your application here.
Probably shouldn't have brought that up to kind of stir the pot here.
No, and I think, I think, you know, again, you, you have... No, and I think, I think, um, you know, again, you, you have, and, and I think it's, there is some validity to, to kind of what you're thinking and, you know, what you, what your plans for the future are, what you like to do, you know what I mean? So, um, you know, again, I don't think there's anything, um, out of place with saying that. It's just kind of maybe that's your prerogative, and that's fine. So, let's, um, I have just a couple of questions that were brought up. The, so, there, and again, this is just because the neighbors have perceived this and see it, and, and honestly, I've seen it too. So, um, obviously, you, you said you, your original testimony that you don't have a problem with facing issues um, with, 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 um, the, with tenants, uh, that you have, you've had. So, is your, what would your, as a building property owner and manager of that property, would you be setting some type of, um, uh, would you have some certain expectations about what's going on there, the congregation? Now, I know that there's all freedoms of free speech and all that, and I'm not, I'm not saying that you should be limiting people to their freedoms.
Sure.
But, you know, obviously, sounds like there's a lot of, uh, extracurricular activity also with the police, so what's your thoughts on that?
That's one where, again, I'm glad that the neighborhood has spoken up, because when I've showed up, it's the quietest neighborhood, I almost see nobody outside. Granted, it's also been October and November when I've been there, but, um, I think that's something I wouldn't be answering honestly to until I actually get to see the situation I'm dealing with there. I'm sure it will not be really easy, but that's okay.
Um, there was another question about a chain link fence, any plans, what's, what was your plans for? I know you're gonna, you'd wanna clean it up, um, any plans for repairing anything, or?
I agree, the chain link looks terrible, um, no matter what angle you're at, or what property you're looking at it from. Um, so if the opportunity to bring down the grade on the backside of that property, to be able to exit from both sides and remove that chain link fence, as well as replace the fence on the back boundary between the two other properties, those would all be part of our plan.
Okay, all right. I, I think I've, I've got everything I need. Any other questions? Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Appreciate it. Mr. Gurekis, you have an opportunity, if you'd like, to come back for five more minutes, um, to speak to the issues again.
Yep.
Just your name and address again, sorry.
Gurekis, fifty-four Harbor Avenue. Everything that he sounds like he's gonna do is good, um, we're just concerned as to what type of people are gonna come in there, and we're all for elderly housing because we know it's a walking distance, there's no parking. And if, if he can put an elderly housing, that'd be great, there's no issues, um, we'd be all for that. Because he, he sounds like he's gonna do a good job cleaning it up, and that's what we need, we need somebody like that to, to clean it up. So, um, uh, everything sounds good from what he's doing, we just need to know what we're gonna be renting to. Because right now, like I said before, it's, and it's not his fault, he's gonna try to clean it up, the previous owner there, they just come and go, they, they come and go, you'll see one person one week, and the next week he's gone again. So, it reminds me of the YMCA on Temple Street, where they rent a room and they leave. So, if it's gonna turn into elderly, that's not an issue, because elderly people aren't gonna be coming and going, they're gonna be staying. It sounds like that's what he's involved in, and that's good. So, if we can get that, that'd be great, so, thank you.
Any questions? Okay, thank you very much. Okay, with that, I'll close the public hearing and open the public meeting. Mr. Curry?
Well, you know, before case tonight, I'm thinking, parking's gotta be a problem there, 'cause I do, I've been by it at times when the, the Odison Street is just filled up, and I, I, sometimes I wonder if it's overflow from the car repair, if it's a big night of pub granary, but I've, I've, I've seen it when it's filled up like that, you know, and that, that's, that was a big concern of mine. But on the other hand, I mean, I think Mr. Worth's testimony is pretty compelling in this metamorphosis for this building. I mean, it's, it's been like this for a long time. We have a plan in front of us tonight, and if that plan doesn't go forth, my expectation is that it's gonna stay the same for years to come. And, uh, while, you know, the parking is a challenge, if, if the building were well-managed and well-rented, I think it would be a, a big step up for the neighborhood. I think the vision that Mr. Worth provides to us, I think, I think there's a decent chance of, of the reality of that playing out. Uh, it, it's gonna take some close management, I, I think in reality, if, if this board were to approve it for it to be successful like that, I, I think it has a, you know, a decent chance of doing it, but it would take some, you know, um, especially at first, I think some close management on behalf of Mr. Worth after the renovation, and, 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 so, I'm feeling support for this. Even though there's the parking challenges, I think those can be controlled. My sense is it would be better to, to, to regrade that side, so you could have, you know, cross-flow traffic, and you could probably get nine or ten cars in there, and maybe that would work. Maybe even have a few visitor spaces there, you know, for somebody coming to visit. So, I'm, I'm, uh, you know, I, I'm in, I, I find support for this, I'm like to hear the other opinions, I know that parking is a challenge, there's no way around that. But, you know, if this were, go through a metamorphosis and end up a nice-looking building with tenants that you don't see police cars there, and that, that could be a very, very good thing for the neighborhood and, and match those nice houses that are all around this building. And, uh, that's where I'm at.
Okay. Um, I, 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 I agree with you. Again, you know, we, we know that, that there is no, um, uh, there is no parking zone, right, that's, that's not necessary, but I think then again, um, the parking that's there, that exists, the space that exists, uh, is, is a big plus for this property. And, and again, I do agree with you, if there was some way to enhance, um, you know, the rear, uh, egress and, and get it out on the, on the other street, I think that would go a long way to helping this out, and, and obviously, there is a challenge to doing that, but, you know, again, I, I think that, um, again, the applicant, like you said, ha- has, has, um, extended the worth of what he's looking, um, to do with the property. So, I agree with that. You know, I use that street, you know, often enough, and, and I know what it is to drive down the end of that street, and, you know, and actually turning on that street, and how tight that can be with the parking. You know, I don't know, again, we, you know, again, it's, where is, where is that parking coming from, you know? Who's, who's cause of those? And, um, I think that, you know, it's credible that what the, the neighbors have, have observed. Um, but I also think, as you say, that, um, that the applicant, uh, is looking to do something with this piece of property that I don't think anybody, uh, could think that it would be done. I mean to say, I, you know, I've been looking at that building for as long as I lived in Nashville, and you've been here too, and it's never really changed, right, and it's, it's been kind of like that little monster on the corner, you know, and it, nothing really succeeded there, right, on the first floor of that, of that property? So, I, I think, I think it's a good thing. Um, and, and I, again, I know that the parking is a challenge, but again, I also know that, um, as a landlord, I, I think that when you're renting or you're advertising a property, you know, you are making certain things clear, uh, and what the expectations are, so. Uh, I think this applicant, uh, would be doing that, so. Anybody else? Mr. Lionel?
I'm generally in, in favor of this, you have to kind of weigh the, the, the different issues here. You know, on one case, we have, the, the first floor of the building has been vacant, essentially vacant, un, under, unused or underutilized for eight years, and the, the building is a mess, and so, something needs to be done. Mr. Worth is proposing something that sounds really, really good. I, I just have to, we just have to be aware that if we simply grant the variance as put before us, some of those, uh, there's no guarantee that it would be filled with seniors, or, uh, people with only, with one car, no car, and all that. We just had, sort of have to take a leap of faith that this is, on the whole, uh, going to be a positive, uh, uh, impact to the neighborhood, and I believe it will be. So, I, I do support the proposal.
And I agree with you, and, um, you know, to your point, um, the applicant, and we can't consider this, right? It's never about dollars, but, um, gonna make a huge investment into a building, a, a significant investment. Um, if I was me, I wouldn't wanna do that, and then have that kind of destroyed, or, you know, kind of used up too quick, right? So, I mean, I look at that as, you know, it looks, again, the, the applicant wants to do the right thing for this property.
I too concur with my fellow board members. The renovation of the downstairs portion of the building would be a huge upgrade for the entire neighborhood, that building is an extreme eyesore. I think more issues are going to happen because of the upstairs than the downstairs. And he's not, and you're right, Mr. Lionel, we can't, we have to take a leap of faith. We can't depend on, maybe it will be seniors, or maybe it won't be anyone who drives a car, but this is the constituency that he's looking to, um, find interest in his building. And so, because he's not having a special application for an elderly, um, home, but for people of a certain age who are able and capable, that's different, and so, I am very much in support of this. I think for the aesthetics and just for the safety issues for the neighborhood, renovating the building and cleaning it up will go a long way for, um, the whole look and feel and appeal of the neighborhood.
Mr. Curry?
Should I move things along?
Sure.
Make a motion? We have four folks in approval, so I'm gonna make a motion here on behalf of the applicant, Kyle Worth. Uh, the owner is forty-nine Harbor Avenue LLC. So, the request again is a use variance, uh, from land use code one ninety dash twenty, paragraph C, section one. And that's the request to convert a previous commercial use in the first floor in an existing building into five multifamily units, or multifamilies, family units are not allowed in the D-three mixed-use zone. The board finds the variance is needed to enable the applicant's proposed use of the property, which is to convert it to, uh, residential use. The special conditions of the property is that it's, uh, it's surrounded by D-three MU, but in the immediate vicinity of it, there's also residential uses. And I think the board finds it's within the spirit and intent of the ordinance to allow this building to convert to, uh, residential use. The board is, uh, taking a leap of faith that this metamorphosis of the property will, uh, in, increase the property values and surrounding parcels. I think the board finds that, given the plan before us tonight, it's not contrary to public interest, and substantial justice to the landowner is served by allowing this switch of use to a residential use. So, I make a motion to approve.
Seconded by Mr. Lionel. Any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor? That's four to nothing. Congratulations, Mr. Worth, your application, uh, uh, the, the appearance has been approved. So, just be aware, there's a third-day window of appeal on this process, okay? If you have any questions about that, you can contact Mr. Vaughn. All right, thank you. With that, I'll close case number two. Here, I'm gonna call, uh, okay, I'm gonna open case number three. I'm going to apologize ahead of time for pronunciations. Owner is Obinello Revocable Trust. Azundu Obinello is the applicant, addresses one thirty-three Ridge Road. This, they're requesting, uh, the following variances from land use code section one ninety dash sixteen, table sixteen dash three, for existing lot with the house on it. One, variance for a minimum lot frontage, a hundred feet required, twenty feet proposed. And two, variance for a minimum lot with one twenty, a hundred twenty feet required, twenty feet proposed. And for proposed subdivided lot closest to the street, variance for minimum lot with one hundred twenty feet required, a hundred fifty, a hundred feet proposed. All requests to subdivide one lot into two lots, and to construct a new single-family home in the front lot. It's in the R-eighteen zoning district. Is somebody here to present that case? Come on up and give us your name and address, please. Again, I, I apologize for pronunciation of your name.
Okay.
If you, if you wanna lift that up, you can, that mic?
Thank you. Whoops.
That's right, you can hold it in your hand if you want.
Okay, so. Thanks. Thank you. Uh, so, my name is, uh, Enzie, to make it a little easier for the first name.
Thank you.
Uh, that's Enzie Obinello, and I live at one thirty-three Ridge Road. And I don't know, I don't know if my husband-
Yeah, but you're the same.
Okay.
Okay. So, um, what we are proposing is to, as you had stated, to divide our current property. And, um, it's about one point six acres of land, and we're proposing to divide it so as to build another, um, single-family dwelling on our property. The way, as you will see from the, um, drawings that were given to you, that the, um, division would be done in such a way that it would not, um, impede or, or change the, um, the neighborhood, the, uh, character, the basic character of the neighborhood. It would also be divided in such a way that the, there would be access in and out in a safe manner, um, onto the street, and that there would be still space and privacy for our, um, two other immediate, um, neighbors that abut us. We, uh, also when we're, also when we were proposing to, or sorry, when we were planning on what we wanted to do with that property, also, it, in our vision, and, uh, some people who have commented, it will also, um, continue to add to the appearance or the aesthetics of the, uh, current, uh, neighborhood and property. Also, that area of, uh, not, like, our neighborhood is a neighborhood that, of course, has a wonderful, um, reputation and school district and whatnot, so it would be nice, because it would also add to, um, additional housing for people who are looking for establishing or setting up in that neighborhood. Uh, but again, to stress that it wouldn't, the single-family dwelling that we're looking to put up would not, um, in any ways, change the, um, look of the neighborhood, um, kind of thing. So, that is a, a big key to us, uh, to what we're proposing. And again, it is a large parcel of, um, And again, it is a large parcel of, a large parcel of land, kind of thing, so. And again, to emphasize about the, the access to the road. I mean, certainly, the drawings that we have put together show how we're making it so that it's easily accessible in and out of the property in a safe manner. I think that's what I... Sorry, I'm looking at my cheat notes, which are the notes that you also have.
So, I think, I don't know if you can, sorry, that read the, I guess, the case number three, where it says that the variances for the minimum lot frontage of hundred, the hundred feet is required, and we are proposing twenty feet. And minimum lot width of one twenty feet, and we're proposing twenty feet. Those proposals are mainly about access to our current property that would be inset from the division. But the division itself, the lot that is being subdivided out, the, if, where they go ahead, the new lot is over actually twenty thousand square feet plus. So, this is a fairly big property in terms of, you know, in terms of really the acreage, in terms of the usage, because the entire one point six acres of our current lot is all grass. It's all virtually very little, you know, what you could call it, like, you know, you see some properties that are about three acres, and maybe the, the developed part of it is, is a little portion of it, but this is all virtually grass. And we think subdividing it will not alter the basic character of that particular area. It will also, as it is currently developed, it's also for a single family, it's also presents a special hardship to actually maintain the property as it is. We have close to about fifteen irrigation zones. And we also have... To, basically to maintain the property, to cut the lawn, one point, virtually six point, one point six acres of lawn that we had to cut. And it's just, it's, you know, our kids are basically gone to high institutions except for our one last daughter, and we think that the, both in terms of cost and in terms of effort to maintain that property as it's right now, is, you know, is, is a, is a special hardship to us.
I would say, just from an environmental point of view, with the water, as I'm thinking of the irrigation system, I would say, I mean, if you're able to put a dwelling there, you, there wouldn't be what now is a huge amount of water that's used to irrigate that, as my husband said, the grass that is there.
As a single-family home, I, I'm almost willing to bet that we spend just as much in cost to maintain the irrigation in this summer as some of the other properties that are in the neighborhood that are multi-condo dwelling, you know, really large property, because we have a small, relatively small house in a very, in a one point six acres of grass, basically, a football field.
Anything else?
I think that's it.
Okay, thank you. Any questions, Mr. Lionel?
Not a question so much as, as just an observation. We don't consider an applicant's cost of, of maintenance of the property or difficulty of maintenance of the property. That's not, not something that we consider in an application.
Okay, okay.
Also, Mr. Lionel? Okay, thank you. Mr. Curry?
Just to clarify, you're at one thirty-three.
Yes.
We have this, and this map is showing us that the structure at one thirty-five, do they use the same driveway and then turn into there or, or not?
They use our driveway to get to the R.
Okay.
I think, Mr. Curry, there was, and I verify this, Mr. Flock, I think that there was, like, this design with two driveways, and I think that was the, the layout when they were building properties, but I think it ended up with just one, one driveway when they actually built it. The as-built is different than what, what was proposed, when I think when they, when they proposed these two lots.
So, I assume one thirty-five has an easement, then, to use your driveway?
We don't know that.
Okay, all right. Interestingly enough, I guess that was the, the only question I had, so thank you for that.
Thank you.
Any other questions? We're good for now?
Thank you.
Probably have your back up.
Yes.
Anybody else like to speak in favor of this application?
Sorry, we've got...
Why don't you, why don't you just come back, just come back to the mic? Come back to the mic.
Oh, okay, sorry.
Sir, we'll recognize you.
I think we got some signatures from some of our neighbors to support.
Okay, why don't you give that to Mr. Lionel, and we'll pass it around. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
All right, we appreciate that. Anybody else to speak in favor of this application? Seeing none. Anybody with questions, concerns, or opposition to this application? Come on up and give us your name and address, please. Again, you'll have five minutes.
Yeah, good evening. My name is Ranial Babala. I reside...
Could you do us a favor? Could you spell your last name, please?
Babala, B-A-B-A-L-A.
And the address?
One twenty-nine Ridge Road.
Thank you very much.
Yeah, just for the record, okay, we submitted a letter. I think you may, you may have it on record that explains our, our concerns and, I would say, objections to, to the variance and, and the proposed house to be built. First of all, we think the variance is very aggressive, okay? I mean, a hundred feet to twenty feet frontage, that's a big change. But our primary concern is really the proximity of the, of the proposed house to our residence right now. If, I mean, the current lot that's currently divided right now, the current proposed lot, okay, is actually a clump of trees, okay? That provides a natural barrier between my house, one twenty-nine, which is the second lot, which is the lot to the right of the house, looking at it. So, it's not really all grass, like Mr. Obinello said. I know that they have a big lawn, but I also have a big yard, you know? I, yeah, I, it's over an acre. I mow it myself using a push mower, so it's like, so I don't think so it should be an issue to whether, you know, having a lot of grass is a reason. But if you look, if you look at the picture, we're just concerned about the proximity, because when we first, when I first moved, just, just some background, okay, there are two lots, and on each two, on each lot, there are two houses built. I, that was built almost twenty years ago, and I was one of the first, I was the first occupant in that, in that, I would say, neighborhood. Well, we really like the area because it provides a, a big space. I mean, although we have shared driveways, it gives us the privacy of having our own. But by just looking at this, you know, I can't see having a house so close to our houses, and what's even concerning, though, is, you know, we don't see any benefit on our end, but, I mean, it's, it's like, it's too close. I mean, and second thing is, you know, the house is, if any, the house is set back farther away from their house than our house. So, I don't see any, you know, any benefit coming from my, from our end. I, I do understand that they ask this for their self-interest, but we also have our interests, you know? I mean, we, we have a good relationship with our neighbors. There's four of us, and, you know, it's not something that we have against them, but we have to look out after ourselves, too. And so, that's pretty much what I have to say, but, you know, it's, I'm not familiar with the bar, I'm not even, when I first moved there, I wasn't even familiar that there was a house to be built there, okay? We always thought there are four houses only, and that area right there is a nice clump of trees, you know, which, so it's just unconceivable for us to see something right there, you know, which is, you know, it doesn't fit. I mean, I, I could just look at it. It doesn't really, it just changes the character of the neighborhood, I think. I mean, if any, it's gonna affect, you know, the marketability of our houses. And secondly, we don't know what the long-term plan is, whether they plan to live there and who's gonna live there, and if they decide to move or, you know, we're, we're gonna be stuck with that kind of setup. And I don't think so, it's, you know, it's just fair to us. So, that's pretty much what I'd say. Thank you.
Any questions? Mr. Curry?
So, just to, I'll try to summarize some thoughts, or as I am hearing from you. How long, you, you've lived there, what, twenty years, did you say?
Yes, we moved there in two thousand two, January two thousand two. We were, there were four houses developed, two lots adjacent to each other, two shared driveways, so we were the ones, we were the first person to move on, I would say, one twenty-nine, okay? And then, I mean, we have a neighbor behind us, and on the left, on the left us is really one thirty-three and one thirty-five. That's how it was when we first moved in.
And when you were looking at this property, you're seeing four large lots, or your large, and, and you see that as an advantage? You, you like that open space? You think that that's kind of the character, you define that as a character of the neighborhood?
Yes, if, yes, if any, I, I think that was really what it was, okay? It's really, I mean, I wasn't even aware that, that, that lot is zoned to be, I'm not familiar with the zoning or anything like that. I'm just, I guess never occurred to me that a house can be built there. That's my presumption. And, and we first moved here, we were happy, four houses, like this, two shared driveways, very symmetrical, a nice clump of trees in between one twenty-nine and one thirty, one thirty-five, and, you know, so, yeah, so that's how, that's my, that is our reason for buying the lot, you know, as compared to places where in houses are just adjacent to each other, you know?
I'm all set.
Thank you. Any other questions? Thank you, sir. Anybody else like to speak with questions, concerns, or opposition? Come on up, sir, and give us your name and address.
Good night. My name's Weibin Liang, living at one thirty-five Ridge Road.
And would, for the record, would you mind spelling your last name?
Yeah, no problem. Weibin Liang, last name Liang.
How do you spell that?
L-I-A-N-G.
Okay, it's on the letter here.
Oh, okay.
We got the spelling, so.
All right, thank you.
Okay, yeah. So, yeah, my wife and I have stronger obsession for this variance. So, I think our reason are written in the letter, so we submitted in the zoning board last Wednesday. So, I think like I, according to what the Ranial Babala said, so we have very nice neighborhood right now. It's very nice. So, we have big spades, best view, so we really don't want, you know, anything change over there. So, I think you can look at all the reason we read in the letter. So, I hope that the zoning board can make a decision in the best of interest for the, our whole neighborhood. Thank you.
Mr. Curry has a question for you.
Well, it's, I don't know if the applicant has seen this letter. If not, maybe I believe they've seen all four, all three letters. Seen all four, okay. I just wanted to make sure the applicant has seen it, so.
And sir, can you tell us, Mr. Curry had asked a question earlier. I noticed that, and I, and we, we go looking at property, we noticed that your driveway's just, just coming off the applicant's driveway. So, do you have a right of way to use their driveway?
The story is, so, when we buy the house, we, we think it's a shared driveway, right? So, nobody told us. So, I think that later on, when we move in, our neighborhood said, this driveway in their property. So, that's what he said, we use their driveway. But in my mind, when I buy a house, I was told, we use the shared driveway. So, that's different, right? But according to the map, then later on, I find, yeah, the driveway in their property. But I think we, when we buy the house, we told we share the driveway, even this driveway in their property. So, that's my understanding.
Yeah, I think you could find out, if there's an easement, when you look at your deed. If you look at your deed, there, if there's an easement, it'll be in your deed. So, the deed to your home, you could research that at County Registered Deeds. It'll tell you if you have an easement. I didn't know if you knew that, I was, I was just curious. So, you could find that out very easily in your deed, that, that, that you, that you have, okay?
Okay, thank you for your information.
No.
Okay, thank you.
I think the letter speaks for itself, in other words.
Right.
Okay.
Anybody else like to speak with questions, concerns, or opposition? Come on up, sir, name and address.
I apologize, Mr. Chairman. Everyone in the neighborhood has hard-to-pronounce-and-spell names. My, my name is Kenneth Kozyra. I'm at one twenty-seven Ridge Road. It is spelled K-O-Z-Y-R-A.
Thank you.
And when my wife and I moved in, in two thousand four, when we purchased the property, one of the reasons we purchased the property is, as Mr. Babala attempted to explain to you, that the four parcels had large yards, there was wood buffers to the neighborhood to the rear, there was wood buffers in the front yards near Ridge Road, because as you folks, I'm sure, are aware, Ridge Road's a pretty busy road certain times of day. So, that appealed to us. The shared driveways, they are, there are easements in the deeds, just so you know, so, because I'm aware that we have ours. But my biggest concern here is the proximity of the proposed house to my two neighbors, and how that may affect their property values in the future when they go to sell their property, and how that might conversely affect mine across the large grass yard. And, you know, I, my understanding of the zoning ordinance is that the applicant has to show a hardship here, and I don't know how they can show a hardship on a residentially-zoned single-family lot that already has a single-family home on it. So, having to get multiple variances to be able to do this subdivision just doesn't seem like it makes sense to me. It doesn't seem like it's a project that is in line with what was planned for the neighborhood here in the beginning. If there was going to be five houses here when they subdivided it in two thousand one, they probably would have tried to subdivide it into five lots rather than four. So, that's all I have for you. Thank you.
Any questions? Thank you very much. No one else in the audience with questions, concerns, or opposition?
Two of them, otherwise.
We're gonna have some, so we've...
We already read that for this one.
Okay, so, we already saw the letter from...
We already talked about it.
The applicant, so we're up here. We talked, we have a letter from one thirty-five Ridge Road and one twenty-nine Ridge Road, which they testify to. There are two other letters that I'll read in. First one is from Kim Foster, thirty-eight Pine Brook Road. Says, hi Kate, which is the assistant, right, in the planning department. My concern is not the following, is not following our zoning ordinances for this property. What is being given up? Typically, these ordinances are in place for safety issues, environmental concerns, or protections, utilities. I would hope to find this was thoroughly researched and not compromise the quality of life or underground waterways in any respect in the area. Few particulars to note. One, safety, this is a very dangerous egress and would certainly add more risk and pressure to those who live there and travelers. Two, land conservation, this property is very close to Pine Brook Land Conservation Area. Disruption to this land buffer could have direct impact. Thank you, Kim Foster, thirty-eight Pine Brook Road. The second letter we have is from Carol Sundias, Sundias, three Byfield Circle, Nashua. Dear Kate and the Planning Board, I am the owner of the resident of three Byfield Circle, which is in close proximity to one thirty-three Ridge Road. which is in close proximity to one thirty-three Ridge Road. I am traveling and therefore unable to attend a hearing tonight. Therefore, please accept my testimony in writing. I urge the planning board to deny the requested variances to subdivide one thirty-two Ridge Road. I believe the requests should be denied for the following reasons. One, there is no compelling need to subdivide the subject property. There is ample undeveloped land along Ridge Road and in the immediate surrounding area. The petitioners should have no difficulty in finding a suitable parcel to build an additional home in the neighborhood if they wish. Two, the location of additional home in such proximity to the road and adjacent houses is certain to change the character and feel of our rural South Nashville locale. Lot size and distance of the dwellings from the road is an important contributor to the tranquility of the area. Three, the noise and nuisance of constructing an additional home and the location will certainly impact neighbors such as myself, and more importantly, will disrupt the wildlife, birds, rabbits, deer, et cetera, in the area. Four, constructing an additional dwelling at one thirty-two Ridge Road could impact the nearby wetlands. The effect of runoff and changes to vegetation must be well understood before approving such a radical departure from the status quo. Five, the home values of the nearby neighbors, such as myself, will be diminished by the requested departure from the zoning ordinance. Six, approving this request to subdivide a standard lot with, will set a dangerous precedent. What will Nashville look like in ten or twenty years if additional parcels are subdivided and ordinances overridden without good reason? I doubt it would still be considered one of the best places to live. For all of the above reasons, I urge you to deny the requested variance. Your power to influence how Nashville continues to develop is important. Our city can become just another sprawling suburb or can remain something special. I'm hoping to use your power to ensure this, ensure the latter. Thank you for concerning my testimony. Sincerely, Carol Sundias, three Byfield Circle. So those are, those three there. I also want to put in the record also that the applicants also provided some signatures in, in support of the application, and they were from residents from forty Pine Brook, forty-two Pine Brook, forty-four Pine Brook, forty-six Pine Brook, and forty-eight Pine Brook. So that's also in the record. Okay, so seeing that there's nobody else to speak in opposition, correct? Nobody in the audience? Ma'am, sir, you have five minutes to come back to speak to what you've heard about. Just your, just your name and address again, for the record.
Izu Obinelo. One thing I have to say is that what we, the drawing we submitted with, for the variance application, doesn't actually, is the outline of the new proposed property is not, is actually representative. We were not, we were trying to put an outline there to be able to measure how much we conform to the, to the specifications for that area. It wasn't an actual outline of an actual house, because if you look at that outline, it's much bigger than the houses next to it. That outline, it was more of the outline of the house we have now. And in hindsight, maybe we should have sketched a footprint that's exactly the same as the the number, the number in houses. Second is that it's set far back from the Ridge Road, far further than some of the other properties that are on Ridge Road right now. That's all I can say. I fully understand the concerns that my neighbors, I have to also say that I fully understand the concerns that they've expressed about this space and what they perceive as the negative impact that you have on their properties. That's your opinion. I know that we have, we have a sort of different opinion, because we're not moving anywhere. Our property is also gonna be there, it's not gonna be impacted. We don't think it should be impacted by that. What is what?
And I think it's to be noted, too, that I'm glad that, you know, our neighbors are acknowledging the, the space and the beauty of the space, which is our property. So again, as we're looking to build on that, we would be looking to, again, capture and maintain the beauty that has been there. I think the key, yeah, the obvious, but it's kind of like, you know, it's, again, they're enjoying the beauty of the essence of that open space, which is, again, our, you know, our property. And again, the piece of the concern about safety and the egress and getting onto the road again, as my husband did state, it is far enough back that, that wouldn't, I mean, the, and again, we've been there for some time. I don't know if that'd be, yeah, a large concern. I know from the two other letters where they had said that. But again, the essence is, we're there, we're on the property, we're looking to divide up our property. We're, of course, going to be particular to who's coming in to buy such a property, because we are still there, kind of thing. So that's, and again, just looking at the fact that we're not looking to upset or disrupt the basic outlook of, of that property or where it's at. Looking to put skyscraper up, or why not, still wanting to maintain that kind of thing. So, yeah, that's the response.
Okay, thank you. When did you buy the property, or how long you been there?
Two thousand and six.
Two thousand and six, okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
So finally, those who spoke in opposition, there's an opportunity to come back and speak and rebuttal for five minutes. And that would be only one person out of all that spoke. So if you want to speak to get amongst yourselves for a minute, we can, we can just pause. And if you want to gather your thoughts and then have one person come up, you can do that. The other choice is that no one does have to come up, it's up to you guys. So I will leave that to you for a moment, and you can let me know if somebody wants to come up and speak. And it has to be an agreement between the three of you. Okay, so it looks like this is a good, looks like, looks like there was an agreement.
The guy's nominated.
Yeah, you got nominated, all right. So you have five minutes, sir, to, to speak.
Again, the name is Branya Babala. Yeah, I'm not sure if you have the full picture of the four houses and the two lots, and how it's laid out right now.
Yes, we do.
Yes, we do.
Yeah, like a footprint of it.
Yeah, looking at, look at it, you could clearly see what the intent was, okay? There was no intent to put a, a house between one thirty-three and one thirty-five. And that is our main concern, okay? The reason we bought the house is because, like Mrs. Obinelo said, it's got a wide-open space. And yet, there is some trees around, okay? The place where the house is to get built is a clump of trees right now. And I don't, and the tall pine trees, you know, is a natural barrier, which actually adds to the, you know, to the privacy and to the, to the character of our houses. And I'm sure that if you build a house there, that's all gonna go, you know, and what's gonna be, and if you look at the thing, there's only gonna be like an easement and probably about twenty feet of buffer between corner of my house to their house. So, you know, it just doesn't fit in the plan. I mean, I think it's pretty obvious by just looking at it. Okay, so that's, that's, that's pretty much our main concern, okay?
Any questions? All set?
Okay, thank you, thank you.
Okay, thank you. With that, I'll close the public hearing and open the public meeting. Mr. Lionel.
Even before I saw the various letters in opposition, I was not in support of this. I'm generally not in a fan of hammerhead lots, especially where the only part of the, the back property, so to speak, is, is just the driveway. And it's clear, as Mr., I'll get this right, Babala just said, that when these four lots were laid out, those, those houses were alternating front, back, front, back, giving a lot of space between them, and that is an essential character of the neighborhood. The applicants have no compelling reason to subdivide other than what they've said was, they don't like taking care of the, all of the property. Having a house there spaced between one twenty-nine and one thirty-five, right in the middle, would significantly change the character of the neighborhood. It would definitely reduce the values of the surrounding properties, especially one twenty-nine and one thirty-five. I see no compelling reason to grant this.
Thank you. This, this was a tough one, and again, not tough, but it's tough because there's a non-conforming lot that's gonna be baked into two non-conforming lots. So it's, so again, what I mean by that is, we don't have this really wide frontage type thing, and then the lot goes really far back, there happens to be a house in the back, back of the lot, where, you know, we're just talking about a twenty-foot right-of-way, which now makes two lot, two non-conforming lots.
So just to clarify, the, the current lot is conforming, right?
Right, right, yeah, what, I guess what I'm saying is that, you know, it becomes two non-conforming lots. So I guess what I'm saying is that, this is on like a, it's a hundred and fifty feet wide, we're gonna take fifty feet of it, and then, and then we're gonna kind of make this hammerhead lot or type thing, you know, at a different scale. I guess what I'm saying is, that this one's a little different, where you don't have, you don't have a conforming lot in the end with that, so. And more so than that is, I agree, Mr. Lionel, after viewing the property several times, and, and again, I travel that road, when I go into Mass and go to Dunstable, and I go down that way, and it's a nice ride. But, you know, when I used to drive by there, I never really paid too much attention, you know. Pay more attention to the right, you know, to what's across the street, which is not, not really much there. It's that, the property that I think the condos have, or somebody has there. But, but looking at that, I, I said, well, like, like you said, like Mr. Babala said, I said, those pine trees have gotta come out, and that changes that whole character of, of that area, and then trying to picture that house there. And, and I do believe you're right, the way that they stagger the houses, and understanding more of how those were built and laid out in the lots. I, I'm having, I'm struggling with that, and then furthermore, you know, the, the fact that, and I, and I appreciate that. So the owners are looking at that, because they're, you know, they're, it would be less yard to maintain. And in their mind, they think, you know, obviously, that, that's important. And I'm saying, I'm not saying it's not important, I don't think it's something that, that I would consider as a hardship for, as Mr. Lionel says, a hardship to, to approve an application of this. So I don't think, really, that there was any true hardship presented for this property that I could support, you know, that I could support the application as it stands. Mr. Curry.
Well, I'm, I'm the same way. I mean, I don't live far from this, I go by this, you know, down the road all the time. I, I've always admired these stretch of properties, because I've thought, wow, I'd love to have a nice big lot like that. And, and Mr. Babali and the other folks at one thirty-five who have signed that letter, I find that letter compelling in the sense that, as you two have stated, I think it does change the character of the neighborhood. I mean, when you have these long lots, it reminds me of West Hollis Street, with those long lots going back to the river, where when there's been a bunch of them undeveloped, they end up getting condominiumized, you know, with a private driveway. You know, that, that would have been an option on this years ago when it was developed. But whoever developed them wanted to keep them in conformity and have large, four-large lots. And like has already been spoken about, the layout is to space the houses out and have as much land in between, because, you know, you have a lot like this with a house here, you know, then one thirty-three goes back with the house here. So I, I too feel that having a house in the front-ish of one thirty-three, you know, is out of character with the neighborhood, and, and it gives a completely different feel and puts, you know, the houses close together. And when folks bought those houses, you know, that was, that's not permitted by law, and that's not the expectation. And we're hearing loud and clear that, that, you know, that would be a detraction, and I concur with that. So I'm, you know, I'm also not in favor. And just a couple things, like on the, on the hardship, I mean, I, I do think that, like a, you know, having a large lawn to cut or maintain, well, it is a hardship for this particular owner. Interestingly enough, the next-door neighbor, you know, enjoys cutting an acre with his push mower, or obviously is keeping him in good shape, there's no extra, you know, he likes it, while somebody else doesn't. But I, I'm not in favor of this for the reasons I've stated, and that's, that's where I'm at.
Okay?
Yes, when I look at this.
Mike.
I keep forgetting to turn that back on. You're welcome, Jim. When I look at this, and I'm looking at it from both perspectives. One, when I look at it from a property owner, I think I should be able to do what I want to do on my land, because it's my land and I purchased it. Then I look at it from the perspective of the neighborhood, the zoning laws, the ordinances that are in effect, the setbacks, the buffer zones. And I say to myself, you have one thirty-five, which is closer to Ridge Road, and one thirty-three, which is closer to, it's the backside of Pine Brook. And then one twenty-nine again goes to Ridge Road, one twenty-seven again comes closer to Pine Brook. If you were to put one thirty-three in between thirty-five and twenty-nine, the, the required footage, God bless you, and the proposed is really a lot. If you have a minimum lot width of a hundred and twenty feet required and twenty feet proposed, you're now really close to your neighbor. It's uncomfortable, kind of close. And I'm finding this very difficult to support. I see the, the pattern, and it's, that is the conformance of that particular neighborhood. The signatures that were pro are on the Pine Brook roadside, which back up to the existing property. However, the neighbors, the ones who are going to be impacted the most, are the ones who are saying, you know, hold the phone here, we have an issue. And so because it's such a conflict, because I can see almost the logic, as much as I would like to say, yes, do this, I cannot.
Any other discussion?
I'm hesitant to motion.
Yeah, that'd be great, thank you.
I'm, yeah, I'm hearing four opinions, including myself, against, so I'm gonna make a motion here for the address one thirty-three Ridge Road. And I'm gonna take the arriants, all, all the requests together. So the first is for lot frontage, a hundred feet required, twenty feet proposed for the existing lot. And then the minimum lot width, a hundred and twenty feet required, twenty feet proposed, again. Well, that's for the proposed lot closest to the street. And then a minimum lot width, a hundred and twenty feet required, a hundred feet proposed. That's, I'm sorry, for the lot closest to the street. So those three requests, I'm making a motion to deny. I believe the board finds a variance is not needed to enable the, well, the variance is needed to enable the applicant's proposed use of the property, but the board finds that there's not a need to, to subdivide the property. to subdivide the property. Uh, I think the board finds it's not within the spirit and intent of the ordinance, given that the four properties here, one twenty-nine, one thirty-three, one twenty-seven, and one thirty-five, uh, the board finds that they were built in, in, in a pattern which maximizes the open space, and that by uh subdividing one thirty-three with these requests uh and having a house in the front would uh be out of character with the, would not be within the spirit and intent of the ordinance. I think the board finds credibility in the abutter's concerns that it would negatively in fact, in, impact the values of their parcels by having a house built uh close, quote-unquote, to their uh, to their current homes, where currently it's open space. I think the board finds it, it is contrary to public interest to allow a, a flag lot to be developed here, and that uh substantial justice is, is served by uh, by not granting this variance and and having the lot remain as is, so I make a motion to deny.
Second.
Second by Mr. Laino, any discussion? All in favor of the motion to deny the application? It's four to nothing. So the application has been denied by the board. You do uh have, there's a thirty-day window of appeal if you wish to appeal this decision. You can do that, and the thirty days starts as of tomorrow. Um, so if you want more information, you can tap Mr. Flock and what the procedures are to do that, okay? Thank you very much for coming. With that, I'll close case number three. You just have the conversations outside, we still have a meeting to conduct. I appreciate it, thank you. Have a good evening.
Bye-bye.
So we have some meeting minutes from November twenty-seventh. Anybody see anything?
I didn't see any issues.
I, I didn't see any issues.
Okay. So I'll make a motion to approve the November twenty-seventh, two thousand eighteen uh meeting minutes. Second by Mr. Curry, all in favor? That's four to nothing on that.
We do not have an agenda yet.
Because uh we don't have a second meeting in December, and the next time we meet is gonna be about a month from now, so we're still, we haven't even taken any applications in yet.
No applications teed up yet?
Nothing yet. But as soon as one becomes available, it's probably not gonna be till about the first of the year, I'll-
So we've got no rehearing requests in?
Nothing right now.
Okay.
Okay, is there any other business?
I make a motion to adjourn?
That's it, okay. We're, motions to adjourn, seconded by Mr. Laino, all in favor? It's four to nothing, we're adjourned at eight twenty-three. Thank you.